The meeting to order, so this is the public hearing for Tuesday, January 27th at 7 o'clock. This is our standards and regulations in single-family zones by law amendments. Now, just checking in, Mr. Clark, I don't have my normal speech here for a public hearing. I think that's just because this is more or less in addition to our regular consultation on this bylaw. Is that correct?
Hi, your worship, we do have the the regular speech regarding holding the public hearing virtually.
Sorry.
Yes, thank you.
Clip to the back, I got it now. Okay, sorry about that. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, so what's going to happen here is at the beginning of a public hearing, we have a script that we have to follow to sort of cover up all of the regulatory matters. A public hearing is a quasi judicial setting for counsel, and so I'm going to read through this script to to go through it first, it'll just take me a couple of minutes time. This public hearing is being convened pursuant to section 464 of the Local Government Act and Ministerial Order M192. This hearing will be held virtually with all participants, including counsel, staff, the applicant, signed up speakers, and observers, all doing so by electronic means. Public participation in this hearing is being accommodated by speakers having signed up in advance, as stated in the notice of hearing, as well as being streamed live over the internet. In addition, those observing over the internet who did not sign up to speak in advance, but decided to do so once the hearing was underway, may dial in via telephone to speak. Information on how to do this will be shared over the live stream once we've exhausted the speakers list of first time speakers. The electronic means being employed for this hearing allow for effective two-way audio communication, while those who have signed up in advance will also receive video of the hearing via the Zoom software. As always, written submissions will be received by the municipal clerk on behalf of and shared with the council at any time up to the time the hearing is closed. These may be submitted to input@dnv.org. Therefore, in this matter, all persons who believe that their interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaws will be afforded a reasonable opportunity to be heard and to present written submissions. The Chair has established the following rules for this hearing. One, we will first go through the established speakers list. At the end of the speakers list, the Chair may call for any other speakers not on the speakers list. These are the dial-in speakers, if any. Two, you will have five minutes to address counsel for a first time. Begin your remarks to counsel by stating your name and approximate street address. After everyone who wishes to speak has spoken once, speakers will then be allowed one additional five-minute opportunity. Any additional presentations will only be allowed at the discretion of the Chair. Please do not repeat information from your previous presentations and ensure your comments remain focused on the bylaws under consideration this evening. If you have provided a written submission, there's no need to read it, as it will have already been seen by counsel. You may summarize or briefly reiterate the highlights of your submission, but ensure your comments pertain to the bylaws under consideration at this hearing. Some important notes about public hearings. Counsel is here to listen to the public, not to debate the merits of the bylaw. Counsel may ask clarifying questions. The clerk has a binder containing documents and submissions related to the bylaws which counsel has received and which you are welcome to review. This is available online at dnv.org/agenda. Everyone at the hearing will be provided an opportunity to speak. If necessary, we will continue the hearing on a second night. At the conclusion of the public input, counsel may request further information from staff, which may or may not require an extension of the hearing, or counsel may close the hearing, after which counsel should not receive further new information from the public. Finally, please note that this hearing is being streamed live over the internet and recorded in accordance with the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Now, refer the matter back to the clerk for your introduction. Okay, you're on mute. There we go.
Apologies, thank you, your worship. I'd like to introduce the bylaws of the public hearing this evening. District of North Vancouver rezoning bylaw 1404, bracket bylaw 8472. The purpose of this bylaw proposes to amend the district zoning bylaw to change how retaining wall heights are measured. And the second bylaw being District of North Vancouver rezoning bylaw 1405, bracket bylaw 8476. Bylaw 8476 proposes to amend the district zoning bylaw to change how the height of detached accessory buildings, including garages, are measured. Your worship, there is a presentation from staff only this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to go to Brett Dwyer for an introduction to the staff presentation.
Thank you very much, your worship. Can you hear me clearly?
Yes, I can.
Great, I'll just share my screen now for the presentation. Okay, so hopefully you can see the first slide changes to single-family residential standards and regulations.
Yes, I can.
Great. Good evening, your worship, members of council, members of the public. Tonight's public hearing is for two bylaws to consider changes to the single-family residential standards and regulations. Specifically, tonight's public hearing and bylaws deal with retaining walls and heights of accessory structures on single-family lots. You may have noticed many of the background documents in the agenda package and the public hearing binder contain information on lighting and noise nuisance. However, those matters are not the subject of the public hearing tonight. So the two bylaws we're considering tonight are bylaw 8472, which amends how retaining walls are regulated in the district zoning bylaw, and bylaw 8476, which amends how the height of accessory structures, including garages, is measured in the district zoning bylaw. In terms of background, through a series of workshops, council expressed concern regarding impacts from single-family development and renewal. At the special meeting of council on November 23rd, 2020, council provided direction to proceed to public hearing with two proposed zoning bylaw amendments, which, if adopted, would change the way retaining walls and the height of accessory structures and buildings are regulated in the district. The first zoning bylaw amendment proposes to change the way retaining walls are regulated. This graphic shows the current zoning bylaw regulation, which shows the first retaining wall is limited to a maximum height of four feet. Any subsequent retaining wall under the current standard must be contained within a height envelope of 45 degrees. That's the angled line you can see on the presentation, from the top of the first retaining wall. And it is noted that there's no height limit on any of the subsequent retaining walls, provided they're contained within the 45-degree height envelope. So the proposal by law 8472 would change the way retaining walls are regulated within the zoning bylaw as follows. The first retaining wall would be limited to a maximum height of three feet, rather than four feet in the existing bylaw. Subsequent retaining walls would have to be contained within a height envelope of 35 degrees projected from the top of the first retaining wall. Now, that's compared to the 45 degrees in the current bylaw. And under bylaw 8472, subsequent retaining walls would be limited to a maximum height of eight feet. The second zoning bylaw amendment, which is by law 8476, proposes to change the way that height of accessory buildings, including detached garages, is regulated. So this graphic shows how the current regulation could work in one scenario. So the zoning bylaw currently does not limit the floor height relative to the ground level of accessory buildings. This can result in elevated structures with relatively high foundation walls, particularly on steeply sloping sites. So the proposal under bylaw 8476 would limit the floor height of accessory buildings, again, including detached garages, to be no more than four feet from natural or existing grade by changing the definition of height contained in the zoning bylaw. At the November 23rd special meeting of council, staff heard that council wanted to hear how these bylaws could work for designers and contractors working in the district. Staff requested input from several designers and contractors, and the feedback is summarized as follows. Generally, the bylaws were not supported. Specific to bylaw 8472, the retaining walls, there was concern that it would potentially reduce buildable area for dwellings and also reduce usable yard space. Specific to bylaw 8476, the height of accessory buildings, there was concern raised regarding drainage created from forcing buildings, accessory buildings, to be lower into the ground. And the last three comments were relative to both bylaws. There were concern raised regarding additional design considerations and costs. There was concern regarding the ability to comply or compliance challenges on, particularly on steeply sloping sites. And there was concern regarding the potential for additional variances that may add to processing time, costs, and uncertainty. How would these bylaws impact existing or proposed new structures? Well, the bylaws are not retroactive. Should the bylaws be adopted by council, any retaining wall or accessory structure legally existing as of the time of adoption would effectively be grandfathered under the non-conforming provisions contained in the Local Government Act. Now, those grandfathering provisions allow these type of structures to be maintained, repairs, repaired, extended, or altered, provided there's no further contravention of the new bylaw. Regarding existing permits and approvals, any permit issued, under review, or submitted before the date of adoption, should council adopt these bylaws, would be subject to review and compliance with the existing regulations. The new regulations would only apply to applications submitted after the date of bylaw adoption. Thank you, worship. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer. Okay, so now moving on to representations from the public. Counsel, given that this is a virtual hearing, I will ask that you either speak up with any questions that you have or email them to staff. I believe we circulated an email earlier today. Just reply all to that email to make sure that your questions get through to staff. We only have two speakers signed up, and so what I'll do is I'll go through the two speakers and then give a first opportunity for anybody wishing to dial in from the live streaming service, and then we'll check in with staff to see if there are any council questions to be reviewed at that time. So at the request of one of the speakers, I've altered the order here so that the very first speaker tonight is going to be Peter Teaven. Mr. Teaven, can you hear me?
I can hear you. I assume you can hear me.
Very clearly. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you very much, your worship. Counsel, for the record, Peter Teaven, 1900 block Indian River Crescent, North Vancouver District, which is a single-family house. I'll start by saying that I feel I don't have much personal interest in this because I completed a house rebuild just about 12 years ago. And that kind of leads to me to the first point I want to bring to you for your consideration. Counsel, as you hear the input from specifically the experts in the industry, I did read that feedback myself. One of those two firms, or one of the two that I read, was in fact the architect who designed our house as well. And I consider him very expert and wise in the field. He certainly led us well through the process back when we designed and rebuilt our house. And for you yourselves, counsel, you know, I ask you to consider which of you, if any, has actually gone through the process to design, apply for a building permit, and then go through the build yourself? You know, not bought a house once it's built, or not bought a renovated house already? Because if you haven't gone through that, I think you really need to understand that process. In my case, we submitted drawings that had zero variances in March of 2007. Now, there was a civic strike in that time, I think it was about six or seven weeks. But with zero variances, it took from March until October to get a building permit. So our entire project was on hold. We were living in a house infected by black mold and needed to get out. And there was much urgency on our part. That's one of the reasons we avoided variances. And nevertheless, it took that long to approve something with no variances. So when you add complexity, I think that in practical terms, you know, as I think you are aware, counsel, I attended most of the meetings leading up to this and listened to all the input and all the discussions and what the concerns were. And specifically when it comes to retaining walls, it seems to me like we are coming up with this new bylaw on regulation, and it seems to all be about one house, the so-called wedge house, which personally I'm not familiar with. And I listened to the people who live next door to the wedge house, and I certainly empathize and understand their concerns. But to change every single-family house design going forward because of one concern, I think is a little bit of overkill. And really, I think the effect will be, and I really believe this to be true, the effect will be that there's going to be a lot of cases where retaining malls that don't match this regulation will make sense, and therefore, variances will apply, be applied for, which just puts, you know, I think what you probably find desirable, it puts control back in your lap. But what it means for the homeowner is delays, 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 and costs, costs, costs. So, you know, if you're going to go ahead and do this, one of the things I ask you do is to set up a committee that has the authority to approve such variances without having to come back to council every time. Because with the current schedule and the current access to not just council, but all sorts of public services under the COVID protocols, it's going to be a very daunting thing, a very daunting thing for someone to go through this. And I do agree with the feedback that it is going to reduce usable space. So I'll move on from that topic. And I'm sorry, I didn't start my clock. Am I close to my five minutes?
I got about 40 seconds left, but...
Okay, maybe I'll come back a second time if I might. Thank you.
Range for that. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Teaven. Next up, I have Cory Cost. Cory, are you able to hear me?
As soon as you are on mute, you should be able to hear me.
Very clearly.
Thank you.
Okay, welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Good evening, your worship and members of council. I have sent an outline of my presentation to Mayor and council earlier, and I hope you got some ideas. I was kind of disappointed to hear by staff that we're only considering bylaws 8472 and 8476 tonight. So if I get that clear, it's no point in speaking to the other matters that I sent you, but they might be still useful in in looking at the staff reports. So, speaking on the first bylaw, 8472, I'm not supportive at all of reducing the retaining walls on property lines from four feet down to three feet in height, nor in changing the 45 degrees down to 35 degrees in the associated diagrams. And I'm speaking especially about side yards, not so much about rear or front yards. I think there's not too many of those. My rationale for objecting is that many, while of course, that's my observation, is probably in the hundreds, if not thousands, on the typical topography that a lot has in the district. Those existing properties will become non-conforming if you choose the three-foot height option. I wish that the staff had provided to council and the public some idea of how many lots this would apply to and how many would become non-conforming. In any case, as you know, 45 degrees, the tangent angle, is much easier because it's always one-to-one. You know, one step forward, one step up. So it makes it easy for the property owner to know what they have and what they are allowed to have. And as far easier to measure geometry in that situation than the 35 degrees case. Nevertheless, that's not really that objectionable type of objection, but it does make things more difficult. The yard space, as you could see in the staff report, would substantially be reduced for lots on sloping terrain. And I think that's kind of unfair to the maximum use of one's properties. So I ask counsel to please retain the existing bylaws illustrated on page 16 of the council package or the option shown on page 17, section 2, leaving the side yard regulations unchanged. Alternatively, simply change the vertical dimensions of three foot to four feet and 35 to 45 degrees in all of the associated diagrams. If this change to three feet is not done, that I suggest more details should be provided in writing to specifically the general public. That informs them that despite the new regulations, they can repair and maintain the non-conforming walls without permits. In other words, please don't leave, you know, the public in a situation where the bylaw becomes more restrictive, three feet, but they don't know what their rights are. They have non-conforming rights or grandfathering rights. On the second bylaw, basically this bylaw changes the definition of height. Why it's not shown side-by-side, a comparison with the definition you had before and the definition you want now, I have no idea. It's completely beyond me. It's so simple to do. And at first, it turns out that the new definition is almost the same as before, except it adds the red part that I show on the screen, which says, "In no case shall the floor level of the structure be more than four feet above natural grade at any point." So I think that completes my input to council for this evening on these two bylaws. I hope the 8476 get some clarification of what it means in real life to have added this one extra phrase. Thank you.
Dr. Cost. Okay, I am now going to ask the clerk to provide the call-in information to the streaming service. And perhaps just to buy us some time to make sure that people have an opportunity to see it and make a phone call in. I'm going to call Peter Teaven back up to speak for a second time, if you'd like.
Yes, thank you.
Five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you. I'm going to start my timer this time, so I know where I am. Thank you, worship. So continuing on, one of the things, I found all of this information very, very technical to read. It took me some time, and I'm not quite sure I fully understand it. I'm very thankful that I was able to get through to Mr. Dwyer and have a conversation with him, clarified some of the points. But as I was reading, you know, all of this about the setback and the 35 degrees and the 45 degrees, as a citizen, I got to tell you, it was very hard for me to imagine what it might mean. But this thought did occur to me, and this is perhaps something that you could clarify with staff. You know, I know a significant portion of this council has been specifically interested in what you've called gentle densification and infill. Whether that was, you know, separating lots as we did several years ago in Upper Capilano or coach houses, for example. And we spent quite a considerable time, you spent quite considerable time, I spent time listening to the coach house regulation. So here, where we have height and retaining wall regulations for separate structures, I'm wondering, and I think it would help everyone to make sure that before you close the public meeting, that you've asked the question on how do the heights in this regulation match up with the heights of the coach house? Because on the one hand, you want to see more coach houses, and on the other hand, we're now restricting the height, restricting the floor height. You know, hopefully that all has been meshed together and works in unison with each other. But it is a question that came to my mind as I read the details. I want to ask you to recall, and I don't know if it's possible to display it, it probably isn't, but the diagram Mr. Dwyer showed with the maximum floor height of a separated structure, like a parking garage, being above grade at any point. And what it shows is something that reminded me very much of the downhill slope properties all through the cove, you know, along those roads there, where, you know, the property slopes away downhill from the road. And I can tell you this, when I think of the idea that water will run from the road down a driveway, and the homeowner has to defend themselves against that, I want to very, very emphatically counsel against that kind of scenario. Putting the onus of maintenance on the homeowner to hold back the tide of water coming from the city street that we all know not only is water, but will include sand and mud and other refuse that will stop up the homeowner's drain system. I think that is a nightmare scenario and will result in a lot of maintenance problems. And foremost, further to that, if you're looking at it, what we're talking about is making that move in order to reduce the height of the retaining wall, but in the downhill slope side, the retaining wall is in the homeowner's backyard or front yard. They're the only ones looking at it. So really, what have we improved? The last thing I think I want to draw your attention to is the issue of non-conforming. And certainly, Councilman Mary will remember when I appeared before the council of the day to talk against the Marine Drive Improvement Plan that declared all car dealerships legally non-conforming. Well, I can tell you the net result of that. The car dealership I worked for at the time applied simply for a building permit to change the cosmetic fascia around the entranceway. And due to the legally non-conforming status, that was something that all it was was cosmetic, change the frame around a door. And because it was legally non-conforming, every single building permit was denied. And is that what we're going to put in here? Where we slap a legally non-conforming tag onto a single-family residence, and anything they want to do, potentially unrelated to retaining walls, will that too be shot down? Because I can tell you personally, my experience in that was that the legally non-conforming status was too pervasive. It was not specific to the issue. I think with that, my time is up, so I'll stop there.
Thank you, Mr. Teaven. Checking back in with staff, have we had anyone call into the meeting to join us to speak for a first time?
Your worship, we have not had any callers join the meeting at this time.
Okay. So I will put back out there, does anyone else wish to speak a first or second? Address the hearing for a first or second time. Okay, let's just double-check in with staff. Staff, have you had any questions circulated to you from council that you were able to address?
Thank you, worship. Yeah, there are a number of questions here, and I'll try. Can you hear me and see me first? Hopefully you can hear me.
Yep, we can see and hear you.
Okay, thanks. Just felt a little bit quiet there for a moment. Just felt a little bit quiet there for a moment. First question was, does the retaining wall bylaw apply to front, back, and side yards? So the retaining wall bylaw would apply to all setbacks, so all required setbacks. So front setback, rear setback, side setbacks. And in the instance of a corner lot, it would also apply to the flanking setback. I mean, generally speaking, the setbacks for front and rear are 25 feet for the RS 1 to 5 zones. It varies in some of the neighborhood zones, up to 30 feet. And sometimes there's combined setbacks. Side setbacks can vary minimum four feet for wide lot, six feet. And sometimes it's also a percentage of the width of the side. As is flanking, obviously, sometimes it's a percentage of the width of the side. So yes, it applies to all setbacks. Some series of questions here. How many properties are affected by the bylaw changes? Well, the bylaw applies to all residential, single-family zone properties. So it affects all, it applies to all properties. To what extent is probably the more of the issue? You know, on a flat site, these bylaws will have very little change. On a slightly sloping site, compliance will be no issue. So it's only really the deeply sloping sites that are going to, it's going to have some implications. Existing struck is the next question. Existing structures would be able to be replaced. How does this work in situations where code regulations around how those structures now need to be built have changed? So obviously, if anything is compliant, it can be rebuilt. If it was made non-compliant because of this bylaw change, if council chose to adopt it, the non-conforming provisions in the Local Government Act allow it to be repaired, maintained. You know, generally speaking, and we deal with this quite a lot, even with the four-foot retaining wall, there are a lot of retaining walls that are higher than that. And we generally allow them to be rebuilt to the same height, same location, even though they may not be compliant with the current bylaw as they're deemed to be legally non-compliant. How do these regulations interact and conflict with the other regulations applying on any of these lots? That's an excellent question. There is a lot of interplay with all the regulations in the zoning bylaw. We've got everything from siding regulations, setbacks, building depth, building height, eve height, and they all work together. I mean, what you find is that with new single-family homes, designers tend to build to the bylaw requirements. So right now, retaining walls mostly are four feet in height with subsequent retaining walls contained within a 45-degree building envelope. If that was more restrictive or less restrictive, I think you'd find that the designers would build to the maximum. Same with, generally speaking, setbacks, floor space, site coverage, and the like. How many builders did we consult with? I think we sent out, I consulted with our residential plan reviewers to get our repeat customers. People do this a lot, and probably six or eight of the regular customers we consulted with. How many unique complaints were received from the public on retaining wall heights and setbacks? I think we did address that in the previous report. The number escapes me, but there was certainly, certainly a couple that spring to mind. How many unique complaints regarding accessory buildings? Well, certainly one that springs to mind. The majority of accessory buildings that aren't parking structures tend to be on grade. So they're typically not elevated because people want good access to them. It's really parking structures that sometimes create an issue because there are limitations on driveway grades. And so there's sometimes not a lot of movement that a driveway, a garage as an accessory structure can move. Sorry, I'm just looking through more questions. Can comment on non-conforming. So just another good question. And I just, I know Mr. Teaven made an excellent point about the legal non-conforming status of some of the car dealerships on Marine Drive. And now there's a very different set of limitations on legal non-conforming uses. And with the Marine Drive exercise, car dealerships were taken out from the C9 zone as a permitted use. And subsequently, the Local Government Act precludes any structural change to the building. Those provisions do not apply for non-conforming sighting issues. So things that would be created by this bylaw, which would be an overheight retaining wall or an overheight accessory structure, those limitations in terms of no structural changes would not apply to those kind of non-conformities. I think that's the question. I think there was one to the clerk.
Yes, thank you, your worship. There was a question regarding the process for the bylaw to go back to staff for amendment before proceeding. The answer would just be that we're in the legislative process. So council may debate, amend, or provide direction at second and third reading following the conclusion of the public hearing. However, this is just to hear from the public during this process.
Thank you. I think I'm just going to go back to Mr. Dwyer for a second. I think the first question, sort of the probative value of the first question was not just how many properties are affected by the bylaw. I think that might have been a reference to Dr. Cost's comment about how many properties were likely to become non-conforming by the change to the bylaw. I don't know who asked the question, but I think that might have been what they were trying to get at. Do we have a sense for how many properties currently not conform?
Through your worship, would be particularly difficult to answer that. I'd suggest that probably someone in the order of 80 to 90% of the new builds would have a retaining wall that is over the of the three-foot 35-degree height plane. You know, last year, we did approximately 50. Historically, we've done more than, more like 100 per year. And I just had a quick look at the number of standalone building permits for retaining walls. And last year, we did 10. And I would suggest all of those 10 retaining wall permits would have been at the four feet and 45-degree limit, because that's typically what people design to. They want to maximize the usable yard space. If they're doing retaining, it's typically to landscape and get a yard area. So doesn't answer the question totally, but the majority of retaining wall permits and new construction permits today would result in some non-compliance with the new bylaw.
Thank you. Just checking in, Clerk Jim Gordon, you have your hand up?
Yes, your worship. I just wanted to quickly address a point Mr. Teaven raised in case it's in the back of any councillor's minds in reference to why couldn't we create a committee to expedite approval of such variances? I just wanted to point out to council that the Local Government Act specifically prohibits the delegation from council of an issuance of a development variance permit. And that's partially because there's a statutory process of notification, a notification radius to be done. So any opportunity for a subcommittee to act to write things is not in the books, but just means we can speak to things going more quickly through council.
But the Statutory Board of Variants could manage variances of this type on a hardship basis. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. And just on that point, an applicant has a choice, Board of Variants based on hardship or a development variance to council, which would just be a blanket variance granted on whatever grounds the applicant presents.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Bond, did you have a clarifying question?
I did. It's a little bit hard for me to write down because I'm trying to think through it. So hopefully you'll give me some discretion on this one. That's okay?
Not in a big rush. Go ahead.
And it's to Mr. Dwyer. I'm wondering, when we are measuring, I guess, the grade or the height from grade, and you mentioned from either existing grade or natural grade, how does that work in a situation where, let's say, we've got, you know, three lots, and there's a lot in the middle that's looking to apply for either the accessory building or the retaining wall? And obviously, it's on a slope. What happens when, like, the natural slope would be like this, but the property on either side have already altered the slope to be either higher and lower? I'm thinking of different ways where a more restrictive retaining wall regulation might impact that, you know, the other person's ability to kind of construct any type of usable structure on their lot. So it is kind of specific, but there, as you said, there's, you know, thousands of properties that this could apply to. So I'm just trying to understand and that a little bit more, how that measurement happens when grades have already been modified on either side of a particular site.
Mr. Dwyer?
So the bylaw defines natural grade as the grade of the property prior to human intervention, or when that can't be established, the date of adoption of bylaw, I think it's 6-0 and change, 6-0, which was June 13, 1988. So I think we acknowledge it's really hard to establish what the grades were prior to human intervention. So it's typically its existing grade. So we require a survey through the building permit process. And the height is measured to the lesser of natural, which is that funny definition, or finished grade. And so, you know, where you've got a cross-sloping site, you know, sometimes the retaining wall has to jog down to comply with the bylaw, so that it's no more than four foot at its highest point. I'm not sure if that answers your question, but that's how it's currently regulated.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dwyer. Thank you, Councillor Bond. Councillor Murray, clarifying question?
Mr. Dwyer, how many, is it fair to say that we have several or dozens of hundreds of examples of non-conforming, given that we've changed bylaws over the decades? And what was a house that was built in 1950 and a house that was built in 2020? They operate under different bylaws. So the house in 1950 would be non-conforming based on bylaws that have changed over the years for how those buildings were constructed?
I think it would be fair to say, I'd probably say on a weekly basis, some legal non-conformity with a building permit application, whether that's because it's over the maximum permitted floor space now, whether it's a setback, whether it's, you know, any number of issues. But it's not uncommon to have legal non-conformities.
And just to Mr. Teaven's points, all of the car lot dealerships, when the district rezoned Marine Drive, all of those businesses were non-conforming.
That's correct, but they became a non-conforming use, which has different, significantly more restrictive provisions in the Local Government Act than a legal non-conforming setback or...
Because the district's initiative on Marine Drive was that we wanted to move the car dealerships out. There was a point to the rezoning. So in the case of the very extreme examples, and I just, I don't have a way to submit this in order to be able to refer to it when we bring this back for debate. But this house on Skyline, for example, and the Wedge House, the height limitation on the accessory structure would prevent the example that we all viewed at the Wedge House to not exist in the future if this bylaw had been in place. Is that correct?
That's correct. I would note that that was a particularly unusual
egregious.
What was unusual site? So it resulted in an unusual result.
But if this bylaw were to exist when that accessory structure was being built, it wouldn't have resulted in the impact to the Wedge House.
Well, that accessory structure wouldn't comply with the new bylaw.
Right, okay. And in regards to retaining walls, I just want to clarify. You said that most of the retaining walls that exist today, we would, because many of them are probably non-conforming, depending on when they were built, we would allow the repair and the rebuilding of those, even if they weren't, even if they were non-conforming, we would allow them to be rebuilt.
Yeah, we routinely issue permits to rebuild retaining walls that are in a state of disrepair or failure or they're unsafe, despite the fact that they may not comply with the current bylaw, provided they are building in the same location and to no greater height.
And my last question, on new builds, designers have the ability to conform to a new bylaw and through design can achieve an aesthetic or a use based on an architectural design or a layout. Is that fair, that there is an ability to design to the bylaw?
I think there will often be, but I'm sure there'll be circumstances where it will not be possible to comply because of grades.
But that's when the variance would come in. And then because of those grades, the variance in all, for all intents and purposes, would be granted.
Well, then it becomes a subject of council discretion. And the scenario I'm thinking about is where you've got a steeply sloping site and trying to accommodate a garage. Because you can't just drop that garage straight, you know, if the site slopes away. There's limitations in terms of driveway grades. So that would be the scenario that springs to mind that would present challenges.
Right. And my last question, Mayor Little, would be, in the last 20 years, is it the vast majority of variances, when we entertain them, the vast majority of variance were approved by council, would you say?
I don't know that we could be putting out there that past performances that council has approved. And I think future councils retain the right to decide what to do with them.
I guess, okay, so I would rephrase the question and say that were the vast majority of variances coming from the planning department to council, were the recommendations in favor of supporting the variances?
I think probably the best answer we're going to be able to get on the spot, Councillor Murray, in that is that, I think, in the time that I've been on council, and probably the time you've been on council, that if a staff recommendation is the issue, it tends to be supported by the council on these types of matters.
Thank you.
We are starting to sound more like we're workshopping the bylaw rather than hearing. So council, if clarifying questions only, please. I've got Councillor Forbes.
Thank you, worship. I hope this question falls where it's supposed to. I just wanted to clarify when I'm reading the report on the noise regulations. It seems to apply to the level of the sound and...
We're specifically addressing the two parts of the bylaw. There's other aspects that are not included in tonight's hearing. And so there's only two specific pieces that we're dealing with for tonight's meeting. They were part of the public workshop on the standards for single-family residences, but there's only two specific bylaws that are up for discussion this evening.
Okay.
I don't, I hope that's clear, that we're talking about the retaining walls, the accessory heights, basically bylaw 8472 and 8476 only at this point tonight, even though the workshop that we conducted on single-family regulations did include broader discussions about more topic areas, including lighting and sound and other things that were discussed at the same workshop. Okay, Councillor Forbes, do you have any further questions on 8472 or 8476? Okay, I'm going to move on to Councillor Kern.
Thanks. I just wondered if staff could comment any further on the...
Thanks. I just wondered if staff could, um, comment any further on the, um, concerns that were raised by industry about flooding and water management. Um, specifically, I'm assuming that it's because it's deeper, it's displacing more earth and potentially requires more. Um, I, I, could staff just explain what the difference would be in terms of how that would be mitigated? Um, and, and the cumulative impacts of things going deeper, because I have heard from developers about. The need to actually raise things out of, um, to make them higher, not lower. Um, so I don't know if staff could please comment on that.
Uh, yeah, thank you through your worship. Uh, the, the comment we heard was in relation to. Um, uh, it was an image in the presentation where the, uh. The parking structure was pushed into the ground, which forced, uh, a positive slope on the driveway towards the garage entrance. And, I mean, this is a scenario that we, we see today, um, and it can be dealt with via a. A trench or a cut-off drain to, to, uh, to a stump. Uh, Mr. Tivan spoke to it as well. Um, we, we certainly wouldn't be attracting water from the road because there's a requirement for it to, for the sidewalk to grate, to grade back to the road. So. Water certainly shouldn't be, be coming down from, from the road. Um, so that, that was a comment we heard from industry. Um, the majority of, uh, accessory buildings that, that aren't, um, uh, parking structures. Um, are generally on grade. They're not recessed into the ground, um, nor would this bylaw force them to be recessed into the ground.
And, um, thank you. And then just a clarifying question about, um, the coach house. If, if this would have implications for our recently adopted coach house policy?
Uh, the, the zoning bylaw amendments made to provide for coach houses, uh, uh, you know, they, they, they self-contained regulation. So this, this, um, regulation relating to accessory structure would not apply to coach houses. Um, the retaining wall, um, change would apply to the same lot. Um, it, I, I can't see it having a dramatic impact on the ability to build a coach house.
Thank you.
Mr. Dwyer, thank you, Counselor Kern, Counselor Bond.
Thanks. Again, I was going to type this, but I figured since we're all talking, it's probably just easier to ask the question. Um, Mr. Dwyer, you said that, um, the proposed regulations for the height and the setback of, uh, retaining walls. Can or, or may, obviously depending on the site, have an impact on others, other, um. Measurements such as the usable yard space, um, I guess, size, uh, height, uh. Floor space of a, a potential home. Are you able to quantify a, any of those impacts, uh, uh, with some examples or, or more generally, uh, based on, you know? The majority of the width of the types of lots that we have in these deeply sloping areas. I'm trying to understand. I'm trying to understand the, the trade-off here, right? Um, and see how these regulations. Impact the different components, uh, on particular sites.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's an excellent question. Um, and through, through your worship, um, there, there's generally a hierarchy. Um, of, of the provisions in the zoning bylaw. Typically, people will try and, and achieve the, the floor space first. They want to make sure that they can achieve the floor space. Um, they, they, they like, people like to get, get the exemptions, um, that are possible. Um, you know, then comply with the setbacks, building depths and the like, uh, you know, in, in all honesty. Um, people will be able to achieve those same goals. Um, if they can't retain the property at the same rate as the current bylaw, it will mean potentially a reduction in usable space. Um, in, in level usable space. Um, so it, it could be. Smaller, in smaller terrorist increments and still comply, but you, but it, the, the main. Change I see occurring as a result of, of these bylaw changes would be less singular, um, large level. Um, uh, usable space.
So maybe just a, a follow-up that, um, that obviously doesn't necessarily impact the maximum. Um, uh, dimensions for a, a principal dwelling, but it might, um, it would potentially constrain those. Uh, dimensions based on the retaining wall setbacks and then re, constrain the. Floor space in, in that, in those scenarios. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Uh, yeah, that, that's a fair comment. Um, I mean, I think there, there, there might be, um, some additional design challenges, but. You know, achieving the things that people want to achieve in, in a new home, uh, I, I think they'll be able to achieve those kind of priority things, the, the, the floor space. Um, um, you know, comply with, with setbacks and the like, but, but I, I think the, the, the one thing that I'm sure will be a result would be less. Um, level usable outdoor space on, on sloping sites. Um, you know, on, on a, on a, a flat or, um, gently sloping site, I, I don't think you would see a change. As a result of these bylaws from the current bylaws, because people aren't building the retaining walls to the maximum height.
Thank you, Counselor Bond. Counselor Murray, clarifying question?
Um, so just in the example of a, a sloped yard. Um, if you were to, um, look at some of the lot pattern down in the Cove, for instance, on. Beachview or Roseland or Baycrest, um, because they all sit on a slope. What's the argument in regards to retaining walls going from the curb? All the way up to the top of the hill. Um. As, as one large mass of cement. Um, versus the previous, um, uh, home, the old home that was ripped down. Where there was, um, two full grass lawns. Um. Like the, the, I'm just, I, I just, I'm curious, like, I'm just a little bit concerned about the concept that. If, um, this bylaw were to be supported, that usable space would disappear. But one just has to look at a house that was built in nineteen fifty-seven on a slope. In some areas, not all, because not all lot sizes and lots are the same, obviously. It's not one size fits all. I think that's some of the challenges with our bylaws. Um, but you could look in many of those old houses on Baycrest, Roseland and Beachview. And those properties that built houses in the nineteen fifties had full front yards. And now with the new houses being built, many of them have front yards filled with massive cement retaining walls. And cement bedding blocks, like massive ones that take up the entire front yard. So the idea that the, the suggestion that the usable yard is going to disappear because of this bylaw. I, I just would challenge that. And I think there's, I think there's a lot of examples, Mayor Little, and it is unfortunate, Mr. Cost, went to go.
Counselor, this isn't the place to make argumentation for against the bylaw. This is the place to ask clarifying questions of staff. On the mayor, on, on the, to help you understand it so that we can have our.
Okay, so then I would ask that staff bring forward, um, uh, um, photographs to compare. Um, or to give examples of front yards being lost. Um, because of the reduction in the retaining walls. And again, it's a variance, so it's not like, um, property owners or, uh, developers can't do it. It just means that council has an ability to give a second glance and make sure the impact is limited to the, the neighboring properties. So I think it, to be fair, we should have had some examples of, um, what Mr. Dwyer is talking about, because. Mr. Dwyer understands the technicalities of this, um, very well.
The, the time for that was at the workshop, which we had a very full workshop. We had opportunity for council to ask questions at that time. If, if any member of council is not satisfied that they have enough information to make the decision. They can always vote against the proposal at second and third reading and, 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 and share their reasons why. And their reasons quite legitimately could be that you didn't feel there was enough information at the time. The hearing is not the place for that, uh, that kind of discussion or debate. That's at the workshop, or if you're not satisfied that all of the information that's been provided, then to vote against the matter at second and third. And return the matter back to the point where we can have more discussion and more information provided, uh, for the public. It can't happen during the hearing. Uh, and so, uh, at this point, counsel.
Can I just have my question answered?
Uh, the question was for them to provide information, uh, going forward at, uh, at, at second, third, the reading, am I?
My question was actually, what is the difference between, um, a, a lot that is reduced in lot area? In the front yard in the front, um, versus the reduction of retaining walls, um, under this bylaw? And, uh, like, I, I, I'm not sure why there is a reduction of usable space when. Currently, in many lots, the usable space is a cement wall.
I think Mr. Dwyer's response to that was that it's a case-by-case basis, if there is going to be a reduction in. The potential buildable space, and it's based on the constraints of the lot. And if you can't, uh, level out enough of the lot, it may affect buildable space, uh, on a property just due to constraints.
And, and so.
Dwyer, is that a fair, uh, paraphrasing of your comments?
Yes, your worship.
And so if that was a problem, what would the solution be? The variance?
Person can apply for a variance.
There we go.
But also, not every lot can have a fully maximized house built on it. There's going to be constraints on every house on every lot already.
Like we do right now.
Okay. Counsel, I see no further hands at this point. So, um, we do have a, a caller that has, uh, had joined. But I, I, I don't see them listed anymore. So I'm just going to check in with the, the clerk, Genevieve, the, do you have, Ms. Lance? Do you have a, a caller for us?
Um, your worship, we do, the caller has left the meeting. We do have an individual who's joined under the name Mitchell's iPad, who was not pre-registered for the meeting.
Okay, uh, for the person at Mitchell's iPad, uh, do you want to be added to the speaker's list?
Yes, please. That would be great, your worship.
All right, is this, uh, Mitch Baker?
It is.
Done, okay. Uh, well, we've, we've already gone through first-time speakers, so you'd be a first-time speaker, so, uh, please go ahead. You have five minutes to address, uh, the council.
Okay, um, it probably won't be that long. I, I, you know, I can be long-winded, your worship. Um. My, my feelings on this are that, uh, these bylaws that have been put in place. Uh, took more than a decade to put in place to build these zoning bylaws. And for the sake of seemingly a couple of properties, it's been brought to the forefront where this should be changed. Uh, I, I don't think that there's a, a, a large enough, um, understanding of the impacts. Of what these do to people's properties by the council, uh, given the short, short period of time. That it's been looked into. I know that even just by looking at the bylaw, that it's written, that it was, as it was sent to me. Uh, it raises some questions even to how it's been written with the retaining wall on the down slope. Showing walls coming off the top of a retaining wall with, with no limit running off at forty-five degrees. Obviously, the, the amount of. Um, uh, what do you, what's the right word for it here? Sorry, um. The attention to detail just in drawing up of the bylaw seems lacking. There, there doesn't seem to be a, uh, a comprehension of what the impact of this will be. I know most of the properties that I build and I, I, I caught in late here, um, that have the four-foot retaining wall, the property line and back at forty-five degrees. Some of them would lose ten feet of property, or it would be sloping away. I did, I did some calculations here. Uh, to put a three-foot wall and then back at thirty-five degrees, and you're losing in a, in a twelve-foot rise in that alone. You're losing, um, uh, five and a half feet of side yard, uh, to get twelve feet. In, in areas, uh, such as the, the, the house on Sunny Crest where the Wedge House is. Uh, there's been a manipulated grade to install that house back whenever that Wedge House was built. Which has now impacted the neighbor to the, uh, I guess it would be to the north. Where he's now retaining, the original grade was manipulated to such a degree. Uh, that it's actually three feet below the road level. And the neighbor to his high side of, of the new build, his main floor is about seven feet above the twelve-foot retaining wall. The to, series of twelve-foot retaining walls above his main floor. And his main floor is twelve feet plus above the neighbor below in the Wedge House, which whose. Grade has been artificially manipulated lower than it was to natural grade. So when we start, when we start talking about retaining walls from natural grade. And the natural grade has been manipulated, suddenly this person's right and this person's wrong. It took decades for these bylaws to be put in place, and for the sake of a couple of places, it's been brought to the forefront. I think there needs to be a lot more research and a lot more education about, by the people that are making these decisions about what the actual impacts are around the neighborhoods. Uh, the lowering of the garage in that house would lower his garage almost six feet. Which would basically make it absurd to have that placed on that property, to move it to the other side of the property. It would be a, a too, too steep a driveway to get in at the twenty percent grade maximum allowable by the municipality. Uh, my concern is that it's, it's too fast. Yes, there's some situations where this is a, this is problematic. There seems to be more, there's, there's far more situations where it's not problematic than there are ones where it is. And if we, if we, if we fix a paint chip with a three-foot roller, we're going to impact way more people. Than we're set out and by these guidelines. By changing the guidelines so, and it seems like little numbers, three feet and ten degrees. It makes an enormous impact on some of these properties, and essentially, you might end up with some properties that will be sterilized in their yard. They'll have a house, but their side yards will all be sloping. The, it, it's just the nature of the, of the District of North Vancouver. We've had something that's worked in a huge majority, I'm going to say, in the ninety-ninth percentile of, of cases. And to suddenly be changing this bylaw based on a couple of cases that have come to the forefront. Where neat, where I know the one project is unfinished, and there's an old saying, never show a fool a job half-done. When, when the trees and everything fill in around that house, everything, I think, will go back to normal. We raised all these landscapes when they built these houses in the fifties and sixties. There was no trees, there was retaining walls, and people hated it then. And now look at it. Now they're fighting to defend those. So, uh, uh, that, I've said my piece. I, I hope, I hope that. Uh, uh, Counselor Forbes brought up that she, the, in November, that she didn't understand the impact, and she wanted to do the research. I think more research needs to be done before we, we tar everybody with this brush. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mitch Baker. Appreciate. Go. Anybody else wishing to address council a first or second time? Dr. Cost, the second time. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Good evening, uh, your worship, and as always, when I listen to public hearings. Um, there are points brought up, um, by other speakers. Which I would like to comment or at least ask some questions about. Uh, certainly, um. Um, I was a little surprised to hear that if a person wants to, uh, repair his. Wall. That you would have to get a permit. Now, I know many walls are made out of just stones, and occasionally the owner has to replace a stone or two and cement it in place. It would seem ridiculous that in order to do that, minor repairs. Uh, that you would have to go to the district, uh, and get a permit. This seems, uh, kind of nonsensical and akin to saying, well, I'm changing the color of my paint on my house. And I need another permit. Um, there has to be some common sense at, at play here. Um, but it also brings up the larger issue if. Uh, what sort of renovation, uh, can homeowners do? Um. To their property without, uh, triggering a full compliance to the current bylaws. Um, you know, uh. What I see here is a thin edge of the wedge of yet another bylaw. Uh, which is non-conforming to a large number of people and, and their susceptibility to, uh, making modest renovations. To their home. Um, far less than. The, the value of the, uh, total property. Um, and, and yet being forced to come. Let's say rebuild or retain walls a consequence. So I just warn council on unintended consequences of adopting changes like this. Uh, please think carefully about it. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Cost. Mr. Dwyer, can you speak to sort of a materiality threshold for? Thank you, Dr. Cost. Mr. Dwyer, can you speak to sort of a materiality threshold for minor maintenance versus a replacement of a retaining wall?
Certainly, and I and I kind of had my hand up to, I want to comment on that. Certainly, we we would not require a permit for any kind of minor repair of any retaining wall. If you're completely rebuilding a retaining wall that's, let's say, eight feet, completely rebuilding, yes, of course, you're gonna require a permit. But any kind of minor repairs, replacing a few stones in a stacked rock mortared type of wall. There absolutely would be no permit requirement for that. Just just another comment on, you know, what limitations are there on? You know, what you can do with a nonconforming structure? I mean, the local governor says that the the structure may be maintained, extended, altered. It can be repaired, extended, altered, provided there's no further contravention to the bylaw. So you can basically rebuild. There's, there's, there aren't significant limitations for legal nonconforming sighting type or height requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer. Okay, do we have any other speakers a first or second time on the matter? Checking in with the clerk, do you have any new speakers from the phone in system? Or any people joining the the meeting directly?
Hi, your worship, we have had no additional speakers.
None of the speakers have been repeating themselves, so we'll offer an opportunity for third time speakers. If anybody would like to speak a first, second or third time. Now would be your opportunity.
Yes, your worship, this is
I see your virtual hand up.
My my virtual hand is going down. Yeah, I learned a new skill.
You're welcome to speak for a third time. I will encourage you to not repeat what you said in your first or second time, please, but you have five minutes to address council.
Thank you. I I don't think I'm repeating myself. You know, I I say this to you, coun- council. I believe for the most part, you and I are not experts in this field. But we have heard from experts and you and I, I think, struggle to understand a lot of the technical details. And the experts struggle to explain them to us in a way that that we can find them understandable. And and that has been quite difficult in that. So I I thank Mr. Dwyer, I thank Mr. Baker. And also those experts who wrote in and gave feedback. You know, to summarize this council, you know, at second and third reading, being the subject of a closed public hearing, I don't get to a comment. So I I'm gonna say to you now, you know, take a look at at what you're hearing. What you're hearing is every single expert that has responded has said, please don't do this. The non-experts have said, please don't do this. The, you know, you set out trying to solve a specific problem with a broad brush. And and one of the things I want, I I think might put it in perspective, I don't know if any of you watch HGTV and all those home improvement programs. But I find whenever I watch them, I'm astounded with two things. Number one, how quickly they get to work. And number two, how little the renovations or builds cost. Now, I don't know, I'm sure there's a lot of TV drama in that, but you know, the one home improvement program that seems to smack of of our environment? That's Lovett or List at Vancouver, where they end up with brill, you know, parts of buildings removed and, you know, expensive other things because of inspection processes. We have so much detail in our building code. And 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 do that correlation. How can people build elsewhere for so cheap? And why does it cost so much to build here? And then maybe ask the experts to answer that question. Because I I don't think you can keep loading on regulation and at the same time expect more affordable housing. And I know no one's out there trying to make more affordable, single family detached houses per se. But I can tell you this. From what I'm hearing these days, my house that was built twelve years ago would probably be forty percent more expensive today and not because of materials and not because of labor. You know, there's just so much regulation and and I, my house is probably pretty close to what people would want to build today, but it is getting so, so expensive. And I I just really advise caution here. Every single voice is telling you, this is not a good move. I suggest this is a time to listen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tevin. Okay, I'll go back. Would anybody else like to speak a first, second or third time? Okay, Madam Clerk, are there any, or sorry, through to staff, are there any further questions that have been circulated from council through to staff? Mr. Dwyer, any further questions?
I think they've all been addressed. If I've, if I've missed any of them, if council can point them out, but I think they've all been addressed.
I don't see any members of council jumping up to say something's been specifically missed. Okay, and Madam Clerk, are there any other phone in additional speakers?
Hi, your worship, there are not.
Okay, so then would you agree, Madam Clerk, that we have exhausted speaking opportunities for this public hearing?
I would agree, yes.
Okay, so we're going to move into the last part of the hearing. I'm going to ask for a member of council to to make a motion.
Move that we close the hearing and return this bylaw to council.
Thank you councillor Murray, seconded by councillor Back, is that correct?
Second, yes.
Thank you. Okay, and so I'll call the question on that motion. All those in favor? Contrary minded. Motion carries unanimously by council. And so at this time, I'm going to declare that the hearing is closed. And what that means is that council cannot receive any additional new information leading up to through second, third reading and actually technically through to adoption. And so what will happen is the the item, the, there's gonna be a little bit of time, a little bit of break. Miss Genevieve Lance, are you able to say when we're likely to see this for council for a second and third reading?
Depending on the schedule, your worship, this would be returned to an upcoming meeting of council, which would be likely looking into February, the middle of February.
Okay, so we'll monitor the the council agendas coming up. It'll likely be in the middle of February. We will obviously advertise that in the normal ways. It's part of regular council. Thank you very much, everybody, for participating. Thank you for staff for facilitating and members of the public for for sharing your thoughts on the hearing today. Have a great night.
Good night, everyone.